Okay, why don't we get started with public testimony. I'm going to call Heather Higgins, William Carey, and Jennifer Tandy.
In that order?
In whatever order you guys want.
Well, I'll go first. I'm fine with that.
Hi, I'm Heather Higgins and I'm here representing Spellman Magic.
I'm sorry, please speak at the podium, to the microphone.
Okay. Can I do it this way to everybody? My name's Heather Higgins and I'm here representing Spellman Magic. We have worked with the elementary schools for the last 30 years. We do character counts assemblies and we do all character building messages, teaching children to believe in themselves, to make good choices, that anything is possible when you do make good choices. And we use magic as a vehicle to get their attention and keep their attention. And we've donated to many of the districts throughout the years. We have gotten an award from the Board of Education in Orange County for our contribution to education there. And we have, we worked with a lot of the schools just this last summer with summer programs and different things. Anyways, we're here tonight just to donate to some of the schools out in the San Diego District and just wanted to let you know of the different things that we do. I have a couple of letters here and there's some pamphlets here for information. It's just from different schools that are endorsing us, saying that their students did well on their STAR test programs because we came in and encouraged them. And then Mitch Hovey says that, "I particularly was pleased with the message of encouragement given to all the students about overcoming challenges and striving for success. I highly recommend this presentation to other schools." So we just have different letters here. And I have Mr. Spellman, he's just going to show you a quick trick that he uses, or it's the newspaper trick that he uses to capture the children's attention and send out the messages.
Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me all right?
No, please speak to the microphone, please.
Okay, I'll try to do my best here. I want to thank you for over 30 years I've been working with the district in San Diego. We just did 30 schools in the inner city here, teaching kids to overcome challenges. It's not where you live, it's how you live and the choices you make and just driving those messages in. And we all work together to make a difference in the lives of the children. We're all here for one reason, for kids, to make kids have a wonderful future and learn to love themselves and believe in themselves and do well in life and give them the tools that they need. And magic is a very, you know, a real fun way to communicate. And that's what I use. I'm not going to do a magic trick right now because you guys are busy, but I take the newspaper and I tear it all up and I teach kids that some people destroy their lives because of the choices they make about education and their behavior. And other kids believe in themselves and when you believe in yourself, anything is possible and the newspaper opens up. So it's a wonderful way to do visuals while you're communicating with them for 45 minutes. And if there's any schools or anybody here that I could help out or donate to, I would love to this year make a little difference in some of the schools and go down there and motivate them to do good this year and excel and, you know, all the wonderful things, character and bullying and, you know, the message that we talk about. If there's any questions or, I know you're very busy, we won't take questions right now, but leave some information, we'll contact you and we'd be glad to donate. Thank you for your time. Thanks for loving the kids, just like we all do. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks very much. William Carey.
My name is William Carey, 6348 Camonito Tenendor in San Diego. I'm here to commend the school board for people like Dr. Foltzer, Chief Student Services, Sarah Sullivan, Principal, and Kevin Quinn, a special ed teacher for moderate to severe. But at the same time, I'm here to condemn the district and the school board for yet eviscerating another program that was working. Instead of benchmarking and learning from this environment that was working, we have now destroyed yet another one. It was a collaboration, my son attends Pershing Middle School, which we choiced into based on this program that was working, along with five other parents that choiced in with their kids to this one program with these two teachers. It was a collaboration between two teachers that was effective in a safe, warm environment. They were planning ahead to use the I-21 technology that was forthcoming. Instead, we have two teachers that are separated across the district, now each with 11 to 12 moderate to severe students and with very low morale between the two of them. This didn't happen by the very last week, just prior to school. So there was no prep. One of these teachers was involved in half of the kids' IEPs in transition coming into school, the other half was involved in the other half of the students. That all fell by the wayside because one teacher has to know what's going on with all of them now. There was no time to prepare. Why did this happen? My answer is the board and the districts are beholden and controlled by the teachers' union. Decisions are made by HR and teachers' union contract that controls all assets without regard to performance. When is this board going to wake up and learn that the fact that these policies and way of doing business is doomed and demoralizing road to head, to take? I look at this mission statement on the wall and sadly laugh because we are yet, we are not working to achieve that noble goal. Way too many of our special ed students are left behind. Programs have been destroyed. I was here three and a half years ago for the same reason and we continue, Ms. Nakamura, I talked to you about it. We continue to decimate these programs instead of benchmarking from something that's working. How do we get a control on these things and move forward into the 21st century instead of just padding the statistics and letting it continue to be the way it has been? As another question I have is, I understand there's 300 surplus general ed teachers on the payroll? Am I misinforming? What are we doing with those teachers? And how are we using them? Are we still using them as substitute teachers?
Thank you. Thank you. Jennifer Tandy.
My name is Jennifer Tandy and I have a freshman at Mission Bay High School and a sixth and eighth grader at Pacific Beach Middle School. I volunteered and served on boards for 10 years with my children in San Diego Unified School District and am currently the Public Relations Director of the Friends of Pacific Beach Secondary Schools. And I'm on the SSC at Pacific Beach Middle and I own Nightingale Music Studios. I want to thank Mr. DeBeck and Ms. Jackson for attending and Mrs. Nakamura's efforts to attend the meeting last Friday regarding the discrepancies we found with the whole-site modernization matrix. Also of highest priority, we discussed the neglect and serious safety issues that exist on the athletic fields of Mission Bay High School. I have here, what you see there is a scaled-down chart of the most serious deviations we found on the scheduling, funding of the whole-site modernization at the high schools. Point Loma, La Jolla High, and Patrick Henry are all scheduled for whole-site modernizations up to three years earlier than Mission Bay, Kearney, and Crawford, even though they score lower on every single assessment, including the FCI, the DFA, and the whole-site modernization index. This is a serious mistake or a conscious preference? Either way, this needs to be addressed and clearly explained. In regards to the athletic fields at Mission Bay High School, students, parents, and business owners, community activists, and city council members have written letters and stood before you countless times pleading with you to do something soon about the state of our athletic facilities. You threw the school a bone and moved their project up one year to begin stadium improvements in 2014 citing safety issues. I know the priority of San Diego Unified District is safety. It is emblazoned on materials and often spoken whenever there's a bond measure or a parcel tax at stake. But we have found no relief, no support, no real action from this board to address the safety and inequity at Mission Bay. Please look at those pictures. Finally, the most unclear part of the WSM matrix is the SFP points awarded to each school. Matching funds for schools for specific needs and wants and moving those projects to the front of the line, whether I think they're necessary or not, is completely understood. But I contend that those points, when added to the overall WSM score, skew the actual view of facilities' conditions. Just look at the difference of rating between the FCI and the WSF, the WSM with the SFP points added. Fund what you need to do with your matching monies if there are deadlines involved, but then leave off the SFP points when scheduling facilities improvements that do not have matching funds attached. If you did that, schools like Mission Bay High, Crawford, and Kearney would shoot to the top of the repair list. We would like to be placed on the agenda of the board's next meeting to discuss the explanations promised to us by Mr. Stuart Markey and the Facilities Planning Board. We should have those explanations in a week or so. We would also like the board to review again the shocking athletic facility safety and inequity that still exists at Mission Bay High School. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public testimony. I'd now like to ask the Navy JROTC color guard from Sarah High School, Sarah High School, to present the colors. Please stand.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the September 28, 2010 regular meeting to order. Ms. Jackson is unable to attend the meeting today. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium, and you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the ASB student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself, what's going on at your school, both academically and socially. First, we'll start with Nancy Sokis, the ASB Council President from Patrick Henry High School.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Sokis. I'm from Patrick Henry High School and I'm the President of the ASB Council of Presidents. This is my fourth year being involved in ASB and I'm very excited to be a part of the council this year as well. On our campus, we just had our Welcome Back Dance, which was a huge success. We are currently planning our senior night football game, which is this Friday, our first of four blood drives for October 6th, and we are beginning to plan homecoming, which will be on October 29th. I encourage you to come donate blood at our first blood drive, which is open to the community, and to join us at our homecoming game on October 29th at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. And then Justine Otska, the ASB President from Point Loma High School.
Hi, my name is Justine Otska and I'm the Vice President of the ASB Council of Presidents. On our campus, we are currently planning our Fall Highlighter Dance that will be this Friday in our big gym. And we are in the process of painting our football stands. We just had our first blood drive of the year where we collected 61 pints of blood. And our next blood drive is December 8th, which is also open to the community and we encourage everybody to come donate. We also have our homecoming game on December 29th at 6:30. And we are celebrating our 85th Gala Celebration this year and it's on November 13th and we encourage everybody to come. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Justine. Okay, we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Barrera. I have a number of things I want to highlight very quickly. Going back to our last bi-weekly meeting and working forward, I want to highlight that we had Senator Kris Kehoe visit I-Hi, you and I, and Darrell Gase, and some of the faculty from I-Hi walked the senator around. I think she had a very good and compelling conversation with a handful of students as to why there is value and need in online education or virtual education. I think that this will be helpful to her in the next legislative cycle when it comes to introducing potentially new guidance for supporting going forward. I think the district has been very good about leaning forward to take advantage of the new technology and credit to Darrell and his team. Couple other meetings I want to highlight, Achievement Gap Forum discussion. I've been selected to be the Chair of the County Superintendent Achievement Gap Forum. We met as a collective of the superintendents a couple weeks ago to talk about how we could target in a more strategic way all of our resources consistently dealing with achievement gap. As we know it today, particularly for our struggling English language learners, for African-American, African students, Hispanic students, and speed up that differential between ethnic groups. So we had that conversation. That led to the first of three superintendent principal forums that was held this year down in Mission Valley at the Sheraton. Over 400 superintendent and principal administrative folks were there. San Diego Unified had almost 70 of our administrators there. Clearly a wonderful opportunity to learn what other districts are doing to tackle achievement gap problems and to make, I think, a connection. So we had conversations with the initiatives of Santee, Carlsbad, and San Marcos and found that there was a lot that they're doing that we could duplicate or things that we could adjust that we're already doing that would be, I think, impacting on our kids. Other couple of sessions I wanted to highlight with you. I had a visit with the Neighborhood House leadership, Rudy Johnson. Appreciate what they're doing to help with the support and instruction for our preschool programs and a need for us to work very closely with them. They, in fact, support about 8,000 children across the county and about a quarter of them come from San Diego Unified. So this is a part of that community outreach, trying to understand where we can work together in a more refined, more effective way. And that led to a similar visit with the Price School last week. I took the area superintendent, San Nellie, and I think to an individual, only two of us had ever been to the Price School, recognizing what wonderful national grades they receive for effectiveness. And again, I think we found that there are opportunities for trading good ideas and working together, both with UCSD, the host campus and one of the key sponsors for the school, but with the school itself, with Scott Barton and his team. So trying to reach out in different ways and different learning environments to work with people. And that brings me to my last two items, and that is some special recognition. Kearney School of Digital Media and Design is being recognized this week in a very special way. So I won't steal any thunder for what's coming later on in the week. But they've also had a twofer in the sense that they were recognized, one of only two schools in California, Price being the other one, as a federal Department of Education designated Blue Ribbon School. And this has to do with the academic performance, excellence that they have achieved, particularly in closing gaps, what I talked about a moment ago. And so I'd like to have the area superintendent, Dr. Burks, provide some comments and recognition for Cheryl and her school.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Superintendent Koba and trustees, my teacher said, "Why are you missing my class tonight?" And I said, "I gotta be at this board meeting because I've gotta be there to join in." The celebration for Kearney Digital Media and Design. So it is a distinct honor as area superintendent, area nine superintendent, to present Cheryl Hibbling, Principal of the School of Digital Media and Design at the Kearney Educational Complex. But before Principal Hibbling comes forward, I think it's really important, I would be remiss if I did not take just a second to acknowledge the support of the school's previous school improvement officers, Donna Campbell and Dr. Diana Carberry, as well as the support of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation and Dr. Libby Gill with the American Institutes for Research. So ladies and gentlemen, Principal Cheryl Hibbling and her outstanding team.
When the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation began its work at Kearney in the fall of 2003, I was approached by the teacher standing next to me about developing an interdisciplinary project-based school that would allow for a higher level of teacher collaboration and student engagement centered amidst real-world learning. This teacher's name is Rick Corlett, or as we call him, Super Rick, or the godfather of DMD. And it is his vision of a school where industry and academic standards intersect that has allowed for students from all backgrounds to thrive academically. With help from our partners, including Time Warner Cable, the Surf Rider Foundation, the City of San Diego, the San Diego County Office of Education's ITV, San Diego Police Foundation, Connected California, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, we have been able to engage students in meaningful and relevant curriculum that has helped support their mastery of grade-level standards and increase both graduation and college admission rates. I wasn't sure exactly what it meant to be a U.S. Department of Education Blue Ribbon School until I investigated it on the Internet. What I found was that this award looks at student achievement as it appears from subgroup data in an effort to recognize schools that work for all kids. I have provided you with that subgroup data and we are very proud of this accomplishment because what it means in terms to student achievement. I would like to begin by thanking the superintendent and the Board of Education for allowing us to continue this transformative model of education. I would like to thank the DMD staff for being the most incredible group of professionals I have ever known. I want to thank the DMD parents represented here by Mr. Dave Page for always being supportive of staff, students, and the community. And finally, I want to thank the students, represented today by my DMD Student Ambassador President, Shaquille Gardner, and the DMD Student Ambassador Secretary, Amanda Page. You are the reason we get up and head to work each day. You are dynamic, special, and talented, and I know you'll both change the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more comment as Cheryl and the team is sitting down. Just so you appreciate the statistics here, there are only 300 some schools, public, private, elementary, middle, high, selected in the past year. And DMD and Price were two of them. And since the program began in the 80s, only 6,000 schools over that, almost three decades, have been selected. So it's a remarkable set of numbers to be selected. So I really do think that they have accomplished a true milestone. The very last item is also about recognition and a little bit of balance here. We heard on the academic side, I'd also like to recognize on the business side. I have two things here. One is, it looks like the Washington Monument, it probably weighs about that amount, it's that heavy. This is a National Purchasing Institute's 15th Annual Achievement of Excellence and Procurement Award, sponsored by a wide range of local, state, and national purchasing organizations. And this has been awarded to San Diego Unified School District, one of only 16 districts across the nation to be so recognized. And this goes to, I think, Art Handby and his strategic sourcing team for all they've done. And some of the criteria for grading had to deal with electronic procurement initiatives, innovation, professionalism, productivity, and the like. And we wanted to single out the team for what they've done. And then, just before I got here tonight, another little award, Excellence in Achievement 2010 from the Universal Public Purchasing Certification Council, also recognizing San Diego Unified for a pursuit of professional excellence. And for the certification process, all of their procurement specialists, in fact, have this higher-level standard of excellence in training. So Art, will you and your folks stand up and let's give them a round of applause? And you can pick up the booty later. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
One more second.
Please vote. Okay. So we'll move now to item E1. This is the presentation report by Education Trust West on the findings of educational opportunity in the A to G audit. Dr. Meyer.
Thank you very much. San Diego Unified has been working on an effort that has as its center goal, the goal of increasing the challenging courses that students are offered, seven through 12. And as we work towards this, the goal is to have A through G courses. And A through G courses are courses that are accepted by the University of California. Without these courses, students cannot apply for the University of California. Dr. Sid Salazar has been working with Education Trust over the last year to assist us as we audit the courses and develop a plan of action towards further implementation. Dr. Salazar has held community meetings and has had different forums over the last year to help us in this very noble goal. I'd like to introduce Dr. Salazar and have him present the Education Trust audit.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Good evening, President Barrera, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Koba, Mr. Stover. Today, we are here to present to you the audit findings from our Education Trust West audit. On April 28, 2009, the board passed a resolution adopting the University of California A through G course sequence as part of high school graduation requirements. The board's direction to staff was to implement necessary learning supports to ensure that all students are prepared to successfully complete the A through G course sequence. To this date, I have provided to you several, three board updates. And most recently, we had a board workshop, really honing in on the different findings. And today is ETW's opportunity to present these findings publicly. With that, I present to you someone who's very well-known in our district, Dr. Arun Ramanathan, who is here from the Executive Director of ETW. And with him making the presentation this evening is Dr. Linda Murray, who is a distinguished superintendent, who was a champion of A through G default curriculum in the San Jose Unified School District. With that, I present to you Dr. Murray.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Koba and President Barrera and the Board of Trustees for having us here this evening to present the audit findings officially in public. You've heard this report before and we appreciated the interactions that we were able to have. It helped us go back and clarify a few things that we'll bring up tonight. So, as Sid said, the resolution that was passed by you in April 2009 looks to adopt the A to G requirements, those that would access the university system as part of your high school graduation requirements. In addition, you entered shortly thereafter in a partnership with our organization to identify the necessary steps that must be taken to ensure access for all to the A to G sequence. To do that, we started with an educational, what we call an educational opportunity audit that involved a transcript analysis. And I'm going to talk in some detail about what we found there in terms of both access and success in the A to G coursework for your high school students of the class of 2009. We did focus groups with stakeholders and gathered some important qualitative information that has helped reinforce the importance of this goal. And finally, we've identified some focus areas for ensuring that all students are college and career-ready. So if we want, look first, and again, we're talking about the graduating class of 2009. We looked at all transcripts of your graduates from that class and found some news that's really pretty good news. About 66%, almost two-thirds of your students are accessing the full A to G sequence and about 46% of them are completing that sequence with the grades that are necessary to minimally apply to the UC and CSU system. That means they got a C or better in every course in the sequence. And I say parenthetically that if you stack San Diego Unified up against the state as a whole, that those numbers are good. I know from your commitment, you have a way you want to I know from your commitment, you have a way you want to go, and as we applaud you for that, but it is a significant starting point. However, when you look underneath the data, as we always do, we disaggregate, we find that there are gaps between students of color, low-income students, English learners, special needs students. We find this everywhere we go. It's not a surprise, as your superintendent said, that the achievement gaps are pervasive in our state, and it's very courageous to attempt to eliminate them, not just achievement gaps, but opportunity gaps as well. So you can see for this class, if you look at the legend on the bottom, you can see your students as a whole, 46% successful in the A to G sequence. And if you break that down by subgroups, there is variation in terms of who is actually being successful in the curriculum. African-American, Latino students at about a third or a little less, white and Asian students having the highest totals. So that opportunity gap is something that needs to be carefully examined as we move forward with the implementation of this curriculum. If we look at our special populations, English learners, special education, economically disadvantaged kids, you see the same kind of patterns of less participation, less success in the full sequence. And it's an area that we're all struggling with statewide, but it's an area that's very important. There is no reason why these gaps have to exist if we can provide the kind of supports that students need. And additionally, there are barriers to success in certain subject areas. English, math, and science, as in other districts, tend to be the courses that cause students the most difficulty. The yellow bar being access to the courses, you can see it's pretty high across the board. But when you look at success, the English requirement, the math requirement are really the ones that are sticking points. That's true everywhere. Students need four years of English, as you know, and if they get a D in any one of those classes, it knocks them out of eligibility. The question, a question was raised at the workshop about what these numbers really mean, because it looks like kids are doing well overall in these courses, whereas the overall A to G completion rate is 46%. And the reason for that is you have to pass every course in the sequence with a C or better. And so it compounds itself, and you end up with a lower than any one of those individual bars would represent. We double-checked all these figures. There's, we went back and looked at actually how many kids were one class short of getting full A to G certification, and it's a significant number. We're going to go back and dig some more into that data, because we think it's very important to know, particularly for those kids who are very close, what is it that would take them over the top, and your success rate would soar at that point. There is variation, a great deal of variation between schools within the district in terms of access to the A to G curriculum. And you can see it ranges all the way from 3% to, I think that's 94% in your high schools throughout the district. So, you know, the issue here is what's causing the unevenness? How do we address the curriculum needs in those schools who are below your average, particularly, and learn from those schools who are really doing a better job of getting students into the courses? And then, again, we see the same kind of pattern of variability when we look at success. 46% overall being successful, but that range is significant across your high schools. And part of the planning process will involve looking deeply into what it's going to take to bring all schools to success. 12th grade, we talked about this a little bit in the workshop. It's a crucial aspect of post-secondary success. Some of the research that we've looked at very deeply suggests that mathematics, in particular, kids who are enrolled in math as seniors, even if they've passed the Algebra II requirement and are theoretically eligible, if they take that senior year of math, they're going to be much more likely to transition successfully to college, not have to take a remedial class, and much more apt to matriculate through the four-year sequence. So we want to look carefully at that senior year in high school and what it means for students in San Diego Unified. Your students enroll in the most rigorous courses, those that are considered college-level at various, varying rates, and we need to look carefully at that, too. Students who are enrolled in no AP or IB classes, and that's broken down by ethnicity on the far left-hand side of the chart, you can see variation there in the percent, particularly for Latino and African-American students. Students taking one to two courses, it's more evenly distributed. Those taking three or four, again, for Latino and African-American students, that's not nearly as likely. So even though I know you believe, and I think we all believe, that open access to these rigorous courses is a great thing, we need to figure out how to make sure that early preparation in high school is getting everyone ready to take advantage of college-level work while they're still in high school. And you can see this chart is, it just shows that for kids who take no AP or IB courses, only 27% are successful in the full A to G sequence, whereas if they take four or five classes, they're very likely to have completed the courses that will get them into the university system. So that, I attribute that to the early preparation in 9th and 10th grade as building blocks, so that students, as they get into those last couple years in high school, are really ready for this level of work. And we looked, besides doing, this was all based on your district-wide data, we looked at every transcript. And we did a little deeper dive into five of your high schools, which you asked us to really look carefully at, to see if we could glean some other things. And as you can see, we looked at Morse, Point Loma, Madison, Henry High, San Diego International Studies. The Far Bar is the district as a whole. And again, you can see, this is the B requirement, the English requirement. And you can see the variation in success rates, San Diego International Studies being almost 100%. Very, very interesting, but quite a variation among the other high schools. With your math requirement, we see the same kind of pattern, some variation among the five high schools we looked at, and you can compare that to your district overall, with, again, San Diego International Studies being pretty close to 100%. As I said in the beginning, we did focus groups in addition to looking at data, because quantitative data tells you one picture. Talking to the stakeholders tells you more, and we feel it's important to know. And so here's some of the things that the students said to us in a variety of focus groups in the five high schools. They felt there was a lot of variation in the expectations that were held for them across teachers and across classes. They saw that special needs students were very unlikely to get the same level of preparation that other students were getting. They applauded the district for adopting the A to G resolution, because they believe that there should be a level playing field for all kids. And they see right now there are some barriers for them to access the full sequence of A to G courses, and those barriers need to be removed. Parents and families said we need to look at Ds, because Ds are one of the major things that hold kids back that are enrolled in the A to G sequence from getting the benefit of being enrolled in those classes. It came up today. We had our first task force meeting, and it was a subject of discussion. Parents and community members want more communication. This is so common across districts, we never can do enough to keep our parents informed, involved, knowledgeable, and it's not just high school. This is from the get-go. We need to make sure our parents understand what it's going to take for their students to get the kind of quality education we want for them, and how they can be involved to support it. We found a lot of differences in how students experienced high school, between school sites, and the offerings they took, and the kind of supports they were able to receive. Parents saw that as varying greatly across schools, would like to see some more consistency there, and to make sure that the supports are clearly there in every school for students who need help. And they also talked, interestingly enough, about making sure that students who were ready were able to access high school classes in middle school, so that algebra, geometry, world languages could be available to them. And you've already made movement in that direction, which is great. Focus groups with teachers and counselors. The teachers and counselors agreed philosophically with this mission and this vision. But they had some concerns. They see tracking as happening in many of our schools, some kids being on a trajectory to college, other kids not. Credit recovery courses are sometimes questionable in terms of the quality, and we need to look at that as we develop our plans, so that if there, if a student is unsuccessful in a course and they take a credit recovery course, they're back on track, they're back on par with where they need to be. Again, we heard from teachers and counselors that algebra and world languages before high school should be standard in this district. They should be offered in the middle school curriculum, and students should have access. And that we need to do a better job of communicating what this whole policy is about. Communication, communication, you know, I know you hear it all the time, and so do I, that we really need to do as much as we can to make sure every stakeholder group is informed. Part of the reason we have this task force now to look at implementation is they actually represent the stakeholders. And part of their job isn't just to have input into your action plan for how to implement, it's to go back to their own constituencies and communicate with them. So here we come to our first meeting today with the task force. It's the implementation plan, and we brought to the task force some preliminary ideas for things that should be included in the plan, in the curriculum and instruction area. The master schedule process needs to be really changed in a significant way, so that the needs of students are first and foremost as we develop master schedules. If support classes are needed, they're there. If tutorial periods are needed, they're there. That there's just-in-time intervention for kids who struggle. Exam and grading policies is part of the task of the curriculum instruction group, to see that there's some consistency in how teachers grade, and that there are some standards for what good work looks like and what rigor really is in a course. Reviewing the D-grade issue, and how are we going to address it? Are there going to be avenues for students who get Ds to improve those grades across the board? Open access to AP and IB courses is something I think you're already working toward, but that needs to be fleshed out, so there's more of that access. Under professional development, we recommend that you evaluate and implement professional development for, not just high school teachers, but teachers through the pipeline, so that this can become a reality for all children. And teachers should be very heavily engaged in what their professional development looks like. Using Parent Connect and individual school websites as a further communication tool in coordinating elementary, middle, and high school curriculum. That really means that when you put your stake in the sand at the end of high school and say, "Kids are going to be college and career-ready," what does that look like all the way back through the pipeline? It needs to be backward-mapped all the way, and elementary teachers need to own this responsibility, as well as middle and high school teachers. For student support, we recommend that you look at some bridge programs. Someone mentioned that before, between levels, so that, that came up today in our task force, so that between elementary and middle, and middle and high, for kids who are struggling, there are some summer bridge kind of programs that will help shore them up. Really dig hard into special needs populations, and how do we get them better access to a quality curriculum. Developing a college-going culture district-wide, this is a critically important piece. We talked a lot about that today, and what it means from elementary to middle to high school to have a college-going culture, and really, we should say, a college, career, and citizenship culture that permeates your district. We need to evaluate the intervention and support programs that are already in place, both those that are in the master schedule now and those that are outside of class, to make sure there is an intervention there for a student when he or she struggles. Need to evaluate the current staffing and create a district-wide format for course catalogs. One of the, one of the communication tools is clearly to identify from school to school to school what the requirements are, and to be very clear in the language, to be very clear about what that means. That will help a lot. And so those are some of the things we brought to your task force today to begin to get their wheels turning. They did a great day of work. It was fabulous. They reported out at the end of the day, and I think we've taken one big step toward implementation. We have four meetings total scheduled on the calendar now. And by December, we hope to be able to bring something of very high quality to you for your approval. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. We've got a couple of public speakers that we might call up, and then I'm sure board members might have questions or comments for you. So I'd like to call up Andrea Guerrero, Elizabeth Liu, Reverend Zam Son Pow, and Markeia, Elizabeth
Good evening. I am with the Education Consortium. My name is Andrea Guerrero, and we have about a dozen folks here scattered throughout the crowd, some of whom will be speaking today. We are part of the task force meeting today. We think this is an important first step. This information is really helpful in understanding what the need is and where we need to go. I'm very inspired by the opportunity that the information presents, and the work of Ed Trust West sort of makes clear where we need to start to focus, and the recommendations are extremely helpful. It can seem daunting to implement A through G for all, but as we talked about today, there are some immediate steps that could be taken, and so it doesn't have to be an all-at-once sort of thing. You've done the right thing by starting with the 9th grade class, and there will be three years of implementation time. And in the interim, we can be thinking about how to prepare everyone else. The group that came together today was an excellent group, and I want to leave you with one thought, which is something that came up today, which is that, right now, only 46% of the graduates are completing the A through G course sequence. Some preliminary information indicates that 1,000 students of the 6,000 that graduated last year are one course short of A through G, one course short. And I know that Ed Trust West is going to verify that information, so consider that preliminary. But if those 1,000 were to complete that one class that they're short, the numbers for this district would shoot from about half of graduates being A through G eligible to two-thirds being A through G eligible. If there was an intentional focus on making sure that everyone was complete, and that there was credit recovery for those who were not able to get that one there was credit recovery for those who were not able to get that one last class with a C or better, then that would be a phenomenal legacy for this board, phenomenal legacy. That would be an overnight improvement. So one of the many exciting things that can happen in order to move us forward and opening up the doors of opportunity, post-secondary opportunity for students. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Liu. I am originally from Sudan. I came to this country as a refugee myself about 11 years ago. Now I am working with a nonprofit called Nile Sisters Development Initiative. I funded the organization because of the needs in the community. And we are providing literacy program for refugee parents, refugees from all over Africa, Burma, and basically anybody who is a refugee in San Diego County. We have literacy program that we are educating parents of refugees to get involved in their children's education and to prepare the little ones, like from three-year to five-years-old to read the ABC, count one, two, three with them and get them ready for education. And recently, through the support from Andrea Guerrero and the Education Consortium, we are working with the parents to educate them about the courses A through G to explain the importance to the parents and make their children, you know, understand what A through G courses are and just to prepare them ready for their high school diploma and to go to college. I myself am a mom of five and my children went through the same system, but very successful. All of them went to college. Three have graduated and I'm left with the two in college. So I think A through G courses is very important and that chance should be given to all the students in all the county schools. Thank you.
Please let me introduce my name first. My name is Maung Shin Ton. I'm originally from Burma. I will interpret that for him as Burmese language.
My name is Zam Son Pow.
I'm from Burma. I came here as a refugee.
I have three kids.
They are now in Crawford High School, 10th grade.
For their future, I want to put them at the college, so help me and help us.
Not only my kids, but also all refugees' kids to help us to reach university. Thank you.
Our last speaker, Elizabeth, is a student and she is feeling not quite ready to speak to the board, so she will on another day.
Okay, we'll look forward to that. Thanks, Mr. Murray. Okay, great. Board members, any questions or comments?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for the report and of course, I'd like to just go to, I think, one of the slides that troubles me a bit. It's the one that has the access and the no-access. It says two pie charts. I don't remember what page number it was. Oh, five. Five is the page number. As I look at it, I have to try to project out from what I see what it might be if all the kids in the school district were in A to G courses. Okay? And according to this, the document shows that of 100% of kids that have access, that about only 46% have success. And then the success is defined as a C in A to G. First of all, I have a difficulty in saying that success in A to G is a C, knowing that that won't get you into the university system at all. So that, you know, the argument would be, well, if we mandated, or let's say we just decided that the only access that any kid would have to the core curriculum, which this is, would be just A to G courses in math, social science, and all that, then the projected amount of kids who would be successful would be less than half. That's scary. That really is scary. Now, I admit that you'd need to have some way to improve their successes, but using just the access as the measure of where we're going next, the argument would be that of those that got into this very good program, that you could predict that at least half of them wouldn't succeed. Now, that's not really exactly what I'd like. So the logic of the data doesn't support some of the direction we may be going. And I'm just, you know, I think we have to realize that we're going to have to do a whole lot more than just provide access because access by itself doesn't guarantee success. And it's clear from the data that access doesn't. So that's one step. Then the next piece of this is, and there's data that's a part of this report, which I think I'm a data person, I try to keep track of it, and there's a correlation that apparently was, I think it's sort of misleading. And the correlation is that the more AP courses you take, the more likely you are to meet the entrance requirements from the university. I think that's true. The problem is that I don't think there's a correlation between putting more kids into those high-level courses would mean automatically that they would succeed in those courses. Maybe there's an element of selection that goes into, why do you pick a course in the first place? Because you're more able to succeed? So that you can't use, let's say, it's like increasing the number of parents that come to school would automatically mean their kids do better? That's a correlation that isn't absolutely proven. So I think this message is that, yes, it's a good idea to do some of this, but not to just increase access, but to increase the quality. Now, if you go to the D levels, which I have a lot of trouble with that. I have a lot of trouble with the idea that it's a good idea for a kid to have guaranteed access to A to G or mandated access to A to G and then come out with Ds. It's like getting into medical school and then failing. And that's better than becoming a taxi driver. Well, I might be able to brag about the fact that my kid went to medical school, but if he couldn't get the same wages as a taxi driver, I don't know if I could call that a success. So those are the arguments we need to look at. I think the report indicates that or is emphasizing the idea that if we channel kids into this program, that they'll get successful. And I don't think that's at all true. I think what happens is we have to guarantee their success as they go into the program. And that requires a whole lot more resources than we're apparently providing even now for the ones that are in the program. So, you know, I honestly say that the idea of having success measured by being in A to G is maybe false logic, that maybe even if you weren't in A to G and you could compete, that'd be worth it. You know, so it's, you know, the idea that you restrict choice and then make people successes is not something I believe in. Okay? I'll leave it at that.
What this data does, and D is a perfect example, is it gives us an opportunity to ask why. So for example, this data might make us ask, are we not giving students enough opportunities to try in this course? Maybe they need to get it a different way, maybe they need to get it a different time. So that would be one thing, you know? What opportunities do we give them to succeed? The second thing that this data, the access versus success, brings to mind is the fact that what kind of supports are we giving them in addition to that course to bring them up so they are successful within that group? So I find this very interesting and as we look at this data, we can then gather around to see and ask those questions to better meet the needs of the students who are in the access-success gap.
Reverend.
Yes, we had a rather long, extended conversation, but I do want to share my concerns and thank you for bringing some of this, you know, the ideas in this forward, I think are very important. You know, a pet project of mine has been a push-button transcript for the district where kids can actually have access to their transcript instantaneously and it doesn't require a counselor to, you know, do that calculation with all the credits. It takes 10 minutes for them to do that. And I've been pushing that. I think that this measurement of A to G on the transcript, how far along are you? How many credits and then something else would, in fact, be very helpful. But you're right, in order to accomplish that, we're going to need a district-wide curriculum catalog that is consistent and we don't surprisingly have that. I think in this day and age, you would think with computers, it would have been easier. I think computers somehow have slowed us down, oddly enough, in that regard. I'm getting comments about concern about homogenization of the curriculum. And, you know, I was wondering if you could speak to the career technical education piece of this where, you know, students that are not choosing to go to college have access to A to G and yet the career, there is my understanding that there's a broadening of the career technical education classes that are becoming, you know, more accepted in this area, that we're gaining accreditation in that.
Yes, they are. There are many more. Over the last few years, the UC system has certified many career technical education classes. You have some marvelous examples, as you heard from the award, of pathway programs that include career technical education. It is very possible to do both. And I think our message is that it's not either-or, that whether a student goes to college or not, that opportunity is there for him or her to do so if they choose, if they're successful in the A to G curriculum. But they've also got, in many cases here, a wonderful opportunity to explore a pathway toward a career that may not take them directly to the UCs. It may take them to an apprenticeship program or a, you know, some other avenue toward a certificate, military, whatever. But the skills of the workforce today and tomorrow pretty much match the skills, particularly in communication and mathematics, no matter what avenue a student were to take after high school.
And I think that much of the public doesn't understand that, that the demands on the workforce are so much higher today than, you know, say, you know, 30, 40 years ago. You know, you can't get by with just, you know, typical classes. So even a C in A to G, while you may not be going to college, is, you know, still challenging and can help a student. But I do worry about kids that who give up and rebel or don't want to and start, you know, I would be much more impressed with this particular slide if that 46% on the right were much, much bigger. I do worry about kids that start collecting Fs and get very comfortable with having Fs and then, you know, just, they're absorbing the material maybe, but they're just sliding along from class to class. That is, you know, we do have that phenomenon and, you know, I am concerned about that.
Yeah, and that's part of why this implementation planning process is so important because that needs to get much bigger.
Well, and I think professional development helps with that. I think also the measurement helps with that. I bet it's a lot of personal attention and I don't know, you know, the professional development needed for that is not necessarily academic as much as it is sociological, I think, helping these kids find themselves or, you know, understand why it's important to succeed and what happens when they don't. I also think, and I've said this for a very long time, that as San Diego, I think we should be the shining example by the sea regarding foreign language, you know, having a border, having an ocean, you know, and, you know, a wonderful example of languages that stepped before the podium just a few moments ago. But I don't think, you know, what I'm experiencing and what I'm concerned about is that, for example, this is what I've observed in some of the middle schools, is it's not where the way you think it is. For example, Mann Middle School, which I'm going to talk a little bit later about in some of my comments, which is making phenomenal success with their schools, after having really struggled for a very long time, has three foreign languages. They have Arabic, Chinese, and French in their middle school, whereas, and they're not a successful school, but their test scores are rising, whereas across the freeway, we have a school that is very successful and they only have Spanish. That's it. And, you know, there's no other, I'm really very concerned that access to foreign language in middle school shouldn't be a factor of whether or not you get Title I funding. It shouldn't be a factor of where your school is, that that is something that we should thoughtfully expand because second language acquisition, I think, goes against human nature personally. I have done that and it's not a natural process. But professional development, again, is key. And then I want to also comment about the backward mapping all the way through school. I think that's absolutely key. How do we get there with that? What type of professional, do you do professional development with the elementary school grades? What's the plan? What's the, you know, how are you going to do that? Because I do think that's absolutely critical. Again, getting to these kids that are comfortable making Fs, you know, if we can get back to the elementary school, but then we've said that since forever and anon. So what's the difference here?
I can share that as I'm looking at the implications for the implementation, that our cluster area superintendent structure supports a lot of these models that we're seeing. So for example, the articulation, elementary, middle, and high, within their grouping, they have access to that. Parents that travel through the cluster pattern, professional development that is tailored at each of the levels, and the backward planning that comes with the conversations of high school and college professors with elementary teachers and what we need to do to backwards map.
Then I'm going to ask my weekly question. Where are we with CalPass? Because that's going to do backward mapping from the university. All of these kids and these statistics and all of this, you know, things, all these things we are positing here in our little hypothesis, that these kids are going to do better in college, CalPass is really going to tell us that. And where are we with CalPass?
I can speak to the last week that you asked this question, that we were looking at the data that needed to be cleaned up and coordinated with the other system. I know Darrell and Ron Rody both have been leading the effort to align that data. And Darrell, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Just a couple of quick comments. They do have all five years of our data. So right now, they are working on bringing that into their system and providing us access back. We gave them all of our data on June 29th.
Any estimated time of arrival?
Well, we keep asking them how long it's going to take them and they haven't given us a date yet, but they are working on going through that data right now and getting it ready. I think we're a larger hit to their system than they may be originally expected.
So I will be asking this question every week.
And we will continue to ask them and we'll get you a further update from them.
Okay, just call me Catherine Nagamura, that's all right.
It does speak to the need to allocate resources and time to that articulation process.
I think it'll be very informative. I mean, this is hypothetical, I mean, as far as the data for our school district is concerned, and I would really like to know. And also getting that backward mapping from the professors with, you know, with the faculty within our own schools, you know, all the way back to elementary school. So I think it's a brave adventure. I do worry about kids getting lost. I do worry about kids getting comfortable with failure and, you know, when we push them too hard. And I also worry that maybe that one kid that, because we have criteria that we want to meet, that we think are important, and they have one class, all they only need is one class for A to G, and we think it's important for our data to meet that one class because then it'll make all of our statistics as adults look really great, maybe there is a passion of theirs that they are pursuing. And I think that's part of the professional development, you know, that how hard are we going to press that they meet our standards as opposed to pursuing their own dreams and their own idea of what success may be? So with that, thank you. So with that, thank you.
I just want to make a few comments. And also, I just want to mention after I do, if either of the student body presidents here want to weigh in on this, since we have a couple of high school students here who could give us their perspective on it, but I won't put you on the spot right now. You just have to raise your hand.
You get 10 minutes to prepare.
So first of all, I just want to really thank you for this report and really appreciate the fact of how this whole thing has come about. And this is what, a lot of what we're trying to do in the district is real community participation and collaboration. And people in the community have come to the board, so it's been, it's been a broad representation of stakeholders involved rather than just one particular group or one particular idea. And I think this speaks to a lot of the things that we're going to succeed at in this district. I think that the biggest general message is that we are raising our standards for our students. And when we first studied this, we saw the example of San Jose, which did raise their standards and also achieved better results. I mean, sometimes there's this fear that we will raise the standards and kids will get left behind, but we actually can expect more and achieve more. And we certainly do have to put a lot of these pieces in place to make sure that kids succeed. I was at a middle school this morning and there were a lot of students in middle school who were taking both algebra and also taking geometry. So they're going to be quite advanced when they get into high school, which is great. And I asked, well, what about the ones that are struggling at the other end? And they were really working on developing programs for them too in terms of algebra readiness, maybe having an algebra course that would go two years rather than one year, instead of having a one year where you take it and fail and then another year and have a bad experience and you try again. So I think this is, it's all related in terms of how we're preparing students and getting them ready for college and career. And I think that the issue here is we're really trying to increase opportunities for our students once they graduate. Someone pointed out that in so many cases, students are only, our high school graduation requirements are very close to the A to G requirements of the University of California. And I myself have talked with students who, just because of an oversight or because a counselor didn't advise them, that they needed to, they maybe had one year of foreign language and didn't take the second year, and they had everything else and they had all the ability and would be able to go on to a four-year university and just missed out on that opportunity. At the same time, I think we realize, I don't believe that the expectation is that every child that graduates, who graduates is going to go to college. But we really want to have the opportunities and the choices there. I mean, before, we used to use terms in labor as far as skilled labor and unskilled labor. And I think one of the points that was made in the presentation is that we're going to need a very highly skilled workforce. And whether that is through concepts and academic theories or whether it's through, you know, hands-on technical knowledge, it's, you know, the unskilled labor is going to become increasingly scarcely needed in this country. And so that's what we're really are preparing students for. So I think when you were mentioning about, you know, the college-going culture, that's good in terms of everybody realizing that they have the opportunities and the choices, but that we can also see that there are many other opportunities too. And I think we have some excellent examples in the district where we're combining electrical apprenticeships where someone can, or pre-apprenticeships where someone is actually preparing to do hands-on electrical work and someone to go through the program will graduate and do that and others will say, I want to go on to college and do electrical engineering. I think the whole point of all of that is we're looking at lifelong learning. I mean, this is, we don't think that the job is over, that they're going to get this amount, but we're going to have them prepared to go on to be lifelong learners. So I think that this is a really, really exciting thing that we're doing. And what I think would be helpful too, Dr. Meyer, would be to, I know there have been different questions about timelines and so forth, if you could even come back to us at the next meeting and kind of give us a picture of what can be accomplished during this school year, where we kind of expect to be so that we can have a sense of momentum in moving on. You know, I realize at the same time, you know, there are going to be budget restraints going forward, but we have a very good program in place and we wanted to continue it. So, do you have any comments?
Answer your destiny. No?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, I just echo what my colleague said. And I very much look forward to the work of the task force and the ongoing updates. And it was a really interesting point that Andrea made about, you know, being able to look at data and realize in this case how close we are to having a significantly expanded number of students that are actually successfully completing the A to G requirements. And I also, it's a point that we discussed with Dr. Murray at our workshop, which is we're going through this journey at the same time that the UC system is going through a journey about really trying to figure out what kind of courses are relevant and are engaging young people and preparing young people for the world that they're going to enter. And so, you know, so much of what we hear about in our district that's exciting, what we saw with Kearney, DMD, and the project-based learning that they do, internships that our high school students are doing, online learning, the Renewable Energy Leadership Institute that Dr. Evans referenced, is really exciting and it's very important that we make sure that we're working with the UC system to make sure that this kind of innovative work is also in fact, you know, meeting A to G requirements. So I thank you so much for, you know, for coming and working with our district. Arun, it's good to see you again too.
Always.
Welcome back anytime. And we really look forward to the ongoing updates from the task force. Thanks, folks. Okay, we'll move on now to item E2, which is our 2010 STAR and Casey report.
What is that?
Or maybe not.
It's Mr. Lord. You have to turn that into the principal.
I'll ask Nellie to set the table for this one with Ron Rody. Just one closing comment on A to G. I think it's a pillar woven through all of our focus points. It's the community engagement, as Andrea was talking about. It's the Vision 2020. It's the GSAs, the Goals for Student Achievement. All are connected through this. So I just, when people ask us, where are we focusing, what's a priority, obviously this is one of a critical core group. Over to Nellie.
Absolutely. Well, each year, we receive our state-mandated test data and in August, we get that back. And we're pleased to share that we've had sustained growth for quite a few years. Today, Ron Rody, the Executive Director of Accountability, will share this annual report. And in his report, he will highlight successes of schools where we've seen great change and growth and also help us focus on where we need to look at allocating resources for greater support. And then finally, he will conclude with next steps and actions that we can take. Ron?
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Do want to emphasize again that these are the STAR results, both CST and Casey, and that actually in a couple of weeks, we'll have the presentation on accountability results, which in that case, we will identify schools at a, or more schools that have done a real successful job of improving student achievement. So tonight's focus will be more on the district-wide focus because, again, these data include students, every student who was tested in the district or at schools, and not all of those students are included in our accountability results. So again, you have seen these data before, but we haven't, it's an opportunity tonight to present them in this public forum. And we see that we have had really sustained growth, as Dr. Meyer said, in English Language Arts, four points increase from last year. And we also see that in mathematics, we've had three points of change. And if you look at these data, you can see that the first two or three years, it was relatively flat, and over the last two years particularly, in both cases, we have had more dramatic improvements. And so this is obviously a positive trend that we hope will continue. Also looking at our science results and history social science results, we can really see the market improvement in science, just tremendous improvement that we typically haven't seen in other subject areas. And we also are seeing really positive changes in our history social science results as well. Now I'm going to turn our attention to look at these in a little bit more detail. And here, we're looking at English Language Arts by grade level, grades two through 11. And you will notice that on the lower end, at grades two and three, really no change or very little change in 2010 compared to 2009. This is, for second grade in particular, dramatic change from last year where we had about seven points of change. So obviously, looking at this data, we'd want to know what's happening at second grade. If we look at the statewide results though, we see that those are pretty much identical. There was essentially no change at either second or third grade. So the results we have at the district are the same. Not that we're obviously happy or pleased with that, but at least it gives us a context to know that our results were very similar to what happened across the state. And we also see that the largest year-to-year changes occurred at grades five and eight. Perhaps very good results in that those are transition grades to middle school and to high school and perhaps indicating that there's a renewed focus on getting students ready for those transition grades. And has been mentioned with the other presentations tonight, we of course do monitor what's happening with our achievement gaps. And we note here, the racial/ethnic groups, looking at the white student performance compared to that for African-American students, and there really has been no gap closure over the five years represented here. And you also, of course, know that the Association for African-American Educators has presented a blueprint proposal to the district and Mr. Koba has convened a work group and in a collaboration with that group to particularly address this concern as we move forward. One thing we note with the performance of our Hispanic students is that it does look like there is some progress here in closing that gap. You notice that there has been a commensurate increase for the Hispanic group that either is the same or perhaps a little bit better than the performance of our white student group. So, and we're looking with the Office of Language Acquisition because obviously there's a large overlap in this group with our English learner population, which is close to about 80% Spanish speakers. So we've got some initiatives going on with our English learners that are probably influencing this change in result. Couple other groups that we look at are socio-economically disadvantaged students and unfortunately, we don't see a lot of change here. The last three years, again, it's a modest improvement, but not enough data points yet to really identify a positive trend. And we could probably say the same thing again with our students with disabilities versus the non-disabled students in that it's very minor, if at all, but really not much change there over the last five years. So the results we've looked at thus far, we're just looking at the percentages of students who were proficient or advanced, that cut point. And here, we're just taking a quick look at all five performance levels. And as you can see, over the past five years, we now have an improvement in the percentage of students who are proficient by 12 points and a corresponding decrease in the percentage of students who are at the two lowest performance levels, the below and far below, of nine points. So again, that's obviously the direction we are heading for and by reducing the bottom two levels. Again, part of the context of our results is looking at what happened across California. And over the last five years, generally, our performance has been just a little bit above the statewide results. But here, you can see with our change of four points last year, you know, marginally better than what the state did with a two-point gain. So again, it looks like in English Language Arts, there's some positive things that are happening in our district. We also look at a number of urban districts across the state. And as you can see here, San Diego is in a virtual tie with San Francisco, both at about 56% and Garden Grove Trails next and third place at 54. So again, we were, you know, a little bit below San Francisco and Garden Grove, or actually about tied with Garden Grove last year. So again, more positive change here in San Diego than we're seeing across the state and with some of the large urbs with which we compare ourselves. This really isn't a STAR CST slide, but obviously, we have a large population, 28%, 30% of our students are English learners. And part of their contribution to our English Language Arts CST results is their ability to speak English language and to read and write as well, of course. And here, we see that we had about 56%, 57% of students who met their annual growth target in acquiring English. Our target for this year was 53%, so we did surpass the target that was established by the state. But obviously, there's room for improvement here as well. Now I'm going to go back to the grade level analysis, this time with mathematics. And again, looking at some areas where we saw the most change here was at sixth and seventh grade, where we had about five percentage points change from 2009. And again, we see at grade two, really very little performance. Again, this is similar to what we see across the state of California. And then we do the same sort of gap analysis. Unfortunately, we don't see the same magnitude of change with our Hispanic group that we saw in English Language Arts. However, again, if you look at, pardon me first, for African-American students, really it's unchanged. With the Hispanic students, you do note that there is a positive upward trend. However, the performance of the white student group is flattened off, flattened out rather, and therefore, that's not the way we want to close an achievement gap, of course. Then also looking at our economically disadvantaged and our students with disabilities, again, not a lot of change here with those groups over the last few years. In mathematics, comparison to the state, really almost identical results, very, very similar, and the pattern of change over the five years is also essentially the same. Looking at our math results compared to other urban districts, in this case, we find that we are essentially tied with Long Beach for third, with both Garden Grove and San Francisco outperforming us. And I think this is consistent, or these results are consistent with the superintendent's initiative to focus on math this year, relatively speaking. It's an area where we need more attention. And then also, a quick look at the performance levels, all five of them. We note that we have eight points change in getting more students into proficient or advanced and decreased those at below and far below by seven points. Still positive numbers, but not of the same magnitude that we saw with English Language Then moving on to our science results, and here, we include the grade levels at which all students must test. So every fifth grader must test, every eighth grader, and every 10th grader must take a science test every year. And as we can see, really strong improvements here in science over the five years. And then a similar look at the change in performance levels. You can see that we more than doubled the percentage of students who are either proficient or advanced, going from 27 up to 56, for 29 points of change, and decreased by about one-half the percentage who are at far below and below basic. So really commendable results for our science programs. We also look at history social science, and as we saw before, a positive trend upward. But again, all eighth graders must take a history social science test, as do all 11th graders. And then we have the overall results. We can see that grade eight, there's been, you know, improvements every year. Grade 11, there was a, for three years, relatively flat, but then we've had some improvements as well in the last couple of years. And also looking at our performance level analysis, again, the same pattern we've seen before, where we're increasing the percentages of students who are proficient or advanced, in this case, an increase of 13 points, and decreasing by 10 points the number of students, or the percentage of students. and decreasing by ten points the number of stu-, or the percentage of students who are below and far below. And then, turning to our KC results, the California High School Exit Exam, looking at both the literacy and mathematics portions. And again, we're looking here at the percentage who are proficient, not the passing. And so, these are only our tenth grade students of whom all must take this test each year. And a reminder that the literacy standards are at the tenth grade level, and the mathematics standards include up to first-year algebra. So, the standards are a little bit different. And we can see the results are higher, a little bit higher for mathematics than they were for literacy. And we also see that the improvement we saw last year with about a six-point improvement has flattened out this year. So, again, this leads us to ask questions as we move forward. And then the gap analysis, we just did a brief one here with our two racial/ethnic groups. And as you can see, again, any apparent gap closure is really not something to focus on at this point because we have had decreased performance of our white student group over the past couple of years. And then also, sorry, that was in literacy. And then looking at mathematics, again, some inconsistent results, if you will, for our white student group. But again, same thing we saw with the CST results. It looks like our Hispanic student group is showing some positive trends upward as we look at year-to-year results. And this slide just talks a bit about the students who were tested, nearly ninety thousand on the CSTs. A large percentage, three-quarters or so, non-white. Sixty-four percent economically disadvantaged. As I said earlier, twenty-eight percent or so English learners, and about twelve percent who are special education students. So, once we get all of this data, then, of course, it's up to the district and our area superintendents and our school sites, their staffs, to start using the data to plan for the upcoming year. And so, what we've done thus far is we've identified schools that had large increases in scores. And so, we'll start doing that analysis, both school-wide scores and also for different student groups. So, even though your scores might not have gone up overall, maybe you made strides with your English learner group or with your African-American student group. So, that's the type of analysis that begins at this point as we move forward to try to make sure that we understand the causes and what is contributing to those changes in performance. And of course, we also look at the schools where the declines have happened and try to understand the context for what has happened there. Is it something with the curriculum? Is there some change in the student population? Those are the sorts of things that are happening at this point. And also looking at, again, what resources were applied and what needs to be perhaps expanded across the district. We know that some schools looked at some online programs that they believe have been contributing particularly to some improvements in mathematics results. So, we need to do an analysis and really look at what, if that's truly it by itself, or were there other parallel things that happened that perhaps could explain those results? And just one last thing that we're also doing. Remember, last year, we, David Lorden led a study of schools that we called Projects, or Schools Making a Difference. We took, there were eight criteria that we found that were common across all of those schools. We added another four or five from the research. And kind of an arbitrary cut point, we said, how many schools made thirty more points of growth on the API? And we have an active survey right now where we're asking them to take each of those factors and to indicate to what degree they believe those factors contributed to the improvement at their schools. And we've gotten about thirty or so responses thus far. I think there were forty-six or close to fifty schools that met the selection criterion. And it's really interesting to look at the results. You might think that they would say a lot of things very positive in all categories, but they've been very honest. They've said, yes, we're doing these things very well. But they're saying, I know one school said that they were at the far lowest rating they could have given. I was on a scale from one to seven. One school said, we're not doing this well at all. So, I think it lends, or leads us to understand that different strategies are important for different schools and that they need to understand their schools and how their staff can implement various interventions and strategies as they move forward. So, that's how we're moving forward with those data in consultation with the deputy superintendent and with the area superintendents. And as I said, we look forward to next, in two weeks, really focusing on the accountability results because we have some real positive findings there to share with you.
Thanks for the report, I appreciate it. I want you to go to slide eleven, or let's take, yes, slide eleven first. It's the mathematics. I wanted to speak when it came up, but I saved it. Okay. One of the things that we need to look at as a district, and data is data. It's, you know, I don't think we're doing badly, I really don't. I mean, I have to say, I can't kill a messenger, or I can't this and that. And I know individual schools are making lots of progress and everything. I'm looking at this as a system, not as an individual thing. But if you look at the slope of the lines here, what you can draw from this conclusion is that kids do pretty well until about the fourth grade, and then they start to do badly. And that's a system information. That isn't, you know, it's not cohort information. It's, you know, if you use the data the way it shows, your only conclusion is that kids get worse the longer they're here. And that's not a very good message, okay? So, now go to slide four. That's in math. So, on slide four, you see the same thing, but it's a slope of the line is different. That is, it's not quite as bad, but it's still significant. I mean, it's something you can't dismiss, okay? So, the tension that I see from this is that there must be some conclusion we can draw about the content and the delivery in the grades that follow the fourth grade. And there's a drop-off that's pretty significant and almost predictable. And it doesn't matter whether it's in 2009 or 2010, even though we did better in the last year, it doesn't mean that the trend line has changed. So, I'll just leave that be. But I care about, the way I handle data is I look at data as a system rather than as an individual thing. And this hasn't changed for years. I mean, I'm not saying that something has happened in the last five minutes or anything like that, but we need to look as a school district as to what we're doing about this. And if we're not doing about it, then we can expect the same results continuously. And I can say that I can go back to an unmentioned era and see the same data. So, are we getting better? I don't know. But the question is, somewhat, yes, but not necessarily. Now, let's go to slide seven. And it's very much like slide fifteen, so I'll just pick slide seven as the example. So, on slide seven, we see, we're comparing years and we're comparing the entire school district. We're not comparing cohorts at all. But one of the things that was reported in L.A., and one of the things that's currently, I think, on the lips of every, I don't want to use insulting words, I was going to say intelligent. But anyway, anybody who cares about kids, is that what we want to look at is value-added. There's no evidence of value-added here. All there is is raw data about the total group of kids. Now, I can tell you that if I looked at the seventh graders who are, that are in this cohort in 2006, who are now eleventh graders, that the data might be different. And I think that's very important data that we should know. For example, if a kid was in that twenty-seven, we're bragging about the difference between twenty-seven and eighteen on the bottom, you know, two groups, far below and below basic. But if a kid was in, in 2006, was in, whatever grade level they're in, that was in the far below, and then they were still with us in 2010, and they were still in far below, then something happened that shouldn't have. And this data doesn't tell us about that. It only tells us about the district, not about that kid. So, when we're analyzing the data, even school data, where they were in 2006 and now they're better, doesn't mean that the kid is better, it means the school's better. But I think the parents that call me up every now and then and give me hell are more concerned about their kids than they are about the school. So, we have to look at this. There's also one other piece of data that I think is missing, and that is, do you get better because you lose kids? Because in fact, in 2006, we had about a hundred and forty thousand kids, and we now have around a hundred and eighteen to twenty thousand. So, then, what happened to them? Are the good ones gone, or the bad ones gone? Or are they all the same? And I don't think they are. So, I think that, you know, nothing wrong with what you did. You did the data the way it shows. But I think if we're going to go to schools and talk about whether the school's doing better, they ought to look at cohort data. And they also, we also ought to look at, if we're looking at district-wide data, then the slides like these with the slopes are more significant than school-wide data. This is basically scary stuff. And, you know, it's not unexpected, but if that slope stays the same for the rest of my life, I'm not going to be happy about it. So, anyway, my comment is, let's look at the data maybe in different ways.
Our sites do have ability with the tools they have at their disposal, for example, Data Director, to use what's called a pivot table report. And they can do that cohort analysis that you're talking about.
Well, and see, that's really significant. And this is, I think this is good puff stuff for the district. We did better than we did before, and we made some change from last year. But, you know, if it's the same old trend, I'm not thrilled. Well, thanks a lot. Good work. I mean, you've got to manage the data, that's not your problem. It's we need to manage the business.
Well, thanks for the report. And one thing that's very good is that we're clearly making steady gradual progress over the last few years. Obviously, one big issue is that when we're talking about progress in education, is this is a very, we have very limited data points. And we often kind of look at the success of our schools. Of course, it's great when our scores are going up, but yet, it's measuring such a small part of what we're doing and what the students are learning. I think you've alluded to this when you talked about how you're going to kind of analyze this and find out what was going on. It'd be really good for us, Dr. Meyer, for us to have a report back in terms of saying, based on what we found out here, this is what we have decided to implement this year to improve even more. And that, the plan could be, and doesn't necessarily mean there's a district-wide plan that we're going to do this or that, the curriculum. It may be that we're going to ask each school to do something, what Dr. Rode is saying, in terms of sitting down and going through the data and figuring out how they can help their particular students. When you're comparing the different districts, it seems to me that this, it's kind of like a track meet rather than a football game. Because if you're on the track team, you go and someone does a high jump and the broad jump and the four-forty and everything else. And then, the scores are all added up. And then, at the end, you can say, you know, this high school or that high school won the meet. There's not a big roar like in the football stadium when a touchdown's scored because it's a very individual sport. And some people having great success and, you know, setting a school record or a personal record. And, but yet, it just kind of gets all mishmashed together in this total track meet score. And I agree with Mr. DeBeck in terms of how we need to look at these data. But particularly when we're talking about how we want to move to a more individualized approach, I think even with the data that we have here, that we really can look and go inside and see, how did each student do? And we need to obviously come up with a definition of what is a reasonable year's growth or something, but it would be an interesting percentage to come back together with, not just who is at the proficient or the basic level, but what percentage of the students were making steady progress in the course of the year. Because, and then you can kind of add it up in terms of the overall trend. But our whole point is to help each student. And that's why I'm saying the comparison of the track meet. I mean, we want them to be good in their particular individual performance. And as Mr. DeBeck said too, I mean, the averages for the school, those are nice, but they just, they just don't tell the whole story. And I think as, as the, some of the information that came out recently too, in L.A. and other places, just because a school is scoring high or scoring low doesn't tell the story, the whole story of what's going on, right? I mean, in terms of the fact that some low-performing schools are making great progress and some supposedly high-performing schools are not moving their kids along that much at all. But again, I just would hope that with Dr. Meyer, that there'd be some way to kind of take this data and look at it on an individual basis, whether it's just going back to the teachers and having, again, we're trying to allow a collaboration, maybe the third and the fourth grade teachers meeting together and talking about this student, how they progressed last year and what they can expect for the coming year.
I can share that the area superintendents and their principal professional development, and many have included teachers as well, have brought the specific data about students and student clusters and student groups together. We also are going to have the county office come work with us as well to analyze the strand data. So, the county assessment office will be working with us as well to look at different strands within this. And in math, Mr. DeBeck really hit that that is a scary slide. When you look at the math trajectory, and one of the things that we've seen is the measurement is critical. And we've had growth because we've been better measuring and monitoring. But in math, you'll find that students, they'll compute, and they're very good at computing, and they get to a certain level and start to plateau. And they haven't moved into the abstract math.
Fractions.
And other types of different ways of thinking. And Sid Salazar and Robert Guano and Sherri Lawson are pulling together a math task force to really get at these ideas about why are we plateauing in math? And are we really measuring a third grader correctly, perhaps they're way up here, and we need to keep them going if they are going to stay on that path to proficient in eleventh grade? And so, part of it is our grappling with measurement, and part of it is understanding how to push them up as quickly as possible.
Thank you. I'm just going to open by saying how tired I am of looking at these scores. I've been looking at them for eight years. And, you know, there, two things have really, over time, we all say the same things every year. And it is, you know, I'm not so sure that we're making progress as much as maybe the kids are getting better at taking the test. You know, that they're, the teachers are better at teaching how to take the test, and the kids are getting better at taking the test over time. And, you know, I would want to see more quantum leaps like we, you know, did with, you know, with our science scores. So, but I do also want to bring up, there was a test I heard about, well, secondly, the second point I want to make about this is that this has almost nothing to do with highly-successful students. Highly, students that are really highly-successful, you know, and it took me a long time to figure this out as a parent. This test really didn't have much to do with, you know, measuring my child's potential. And, you know, that we don't, as parents, get that measurement very much until the student enters high school and takes the SAT. And they're in a different, you know, pool of students. And that's, you know, that's a lot of time to spend on taking tests. And I think it's important, and I've said before, it's one window in the schoolhouse, and I think it's, it's an important one to take. But there was another test also on creativity that I read about recently. And do you know the name of that test? It's the...
No, but we are looking into how creativity and critical thinking play into this, looking at the same data every year. And we've looked at the workforce partnership data. And they have shared with Bill and I that the two things they're looking for are not whether you have immediate recall. They're looking at synthesis of these ideas, and then also application of the knowledge.
Exactly.
So, we're not really testing either of those things with these tests. However, they do give us a way to get some information and to push towards synthesis and the application.
Well, and those social skills that I've brought up before, that seems to be reverberating through the district, that, you know, they also would like them to get along with the other employees and their, who they're working with as well. I disagree with Mr. DeBeck on the math scores. I mean, I think they're concerning to me, but I don't think that what it means is that the kids are getting, doing worse the longer they're with us. I think it means the subject matter is getting a heck of a lot harder. You know, I mean, calculus is not the same as doing fractions. You know, and trigonometry is in a whole different ballpark than the multiplication table. is in a whole different ballpark than the multiplication table. So the bar goes up very high. And I, you know, that is, you know, there's a certain elitism to mathematics, and I think also the vocabulary that goes along with it. I think, you know, I wonder, how much are we doing to help students who are very verbal? You know, it's almost, it is a second language, you know, in and of itself, this whole language that goes with, you know, with trig and calc and, you know, all of that. So, you know, what are we doing to approach the vocabulary building and structure behind that? And that backward mapping that they are talking about in the, you know, with the A to G requirements? You know, I think we don't, we don't really do enough of that. I am dismayed on the mathematics that were lower than San Francisco, you know, in Garden Grove, and, you know, that I think clearly we ought to be, we ought to be moving up in that area as well. But it's, math is just, it's a special challenge, and it has been for, since my mother was in school, and beyond that, I'm sure, you know, students of, you know, Pythagoras also had trouble, so. But I'm also wondering, you know, with the science scores, I'm concerned that, you know, we have this drop-off fifth and eighth grade, and then when your science scores actually start counting towards college is when they really drop off. And, you know, that's going to be, I also like to have seen in your report, and I'm going to grade you on this, as far as this is, I'm taking off a couple of points here, I would like to have seen the large urbans and how we compare, you know, in science and in, what was it, history? You know, I would have liked to have seen where we are in, you know, relative to the other urban school districts, because that was, I just think that's helpful to sort of benchmark and have an idea. And I know we can't completely compare ourselves, I know we can't compare ourselves yet to nationally, but it'd be nice to know where the people are at across the country as well. I know that's not possible right now. But the history scores, I would like to know, having been a history buff myself, that, you know, where we're doing. Also regarding the California High School exit exam, what's the ultimate passage rate? Okay, this is, you know, you're taking a fixed point in time with regard to the 10th grade and first-time test takers. But what is our passage rate for students on the California High School exit exam? You know, by the time they get to the 12th grade, how many of our, what percentage of our kids have passed it?
I don't recall the number. It's 90-some percent, I don't...
Right. So 90, I mean, this looks like 42 percent, and I'm going to go out in the public and I'm going to get slapped upside the head for this, that only 42 percent are passing both sections of the exam, which, by the way, you don't have to pass at the same time. Like the architect's exam, you can take it in sections. I'd like to point out to my husband that the bar exam, you have to pass all at once. So, but with the California High School exit exam, you can pass it at different, you know, points in time for both sections, but only, you know, ultimately, I think it's important, particularly in a report like this, it's going out to the public, that we do say, you know, or do, you know, tell it's not necessary, we want 100 percent passage rate, but 90 percentage, you know, 92 percent or 95, wherever we are at with that. You got that number at your fingertips there?
I thought it was 91.
91? See, I knew you would.
It's 100 percent of graduates.
Yeah, so I think it's, but of those that, ultimately, that take it, so I think it's, yeah, well, but 91 percent of those that in the 12th grade, it's still, that's not perfect. Okay, anyway, that's, oh, and also, I mean, one last thing, I'm sorry. On this, you know, I am, I'll tell you what disturbs me, is the California English Language Development Test, the CELT. And that is, with as much progress that we're making in language acquisition and how that is done, these numbers, I think, should be going up. We're learning more and more about second language acquisition and how to do that. You know, it's, and some of it's not all that old. I mean, you shouldn't put kids that speak the same language in the same room together if you can at all avoid it. You know, Spanish speakers who are trying to learn English shouldn't be in the same room with other Spanish speakers unless it's a bilingual program that is specifically and very painfully, you know, it's got to be very clearly structured. That's a hard, hard thing to do. But we should, you know, with Rosetta Stone and, there's a lot of progress in second language acquisition right now. And I'm not saying that, as I said earlier, you know, I acknowledge that I think learning a second language doesn't come naturally. I think it's a hard thing to do, it's an admirable thing to do, it's something we should go for, but we should do better. We should do better in California, we should do better particularly in San Diego, and that trajectory really ought to be higher. We should be the example. So, thank you for indulging me.
I certainly wouldn't argue with your comments about English learners, but I think we need to remember that nationally, we see that students tend to plateau at that intermediate level. So when they get kind of to the mid-level of language acquisition, it usually takes them two years or so to advance to the next level. Our measurement doesn't allow for that plateau, it still requires them to make one year's change for every year that they're in our schools.
Is there some way that we can, you know, footnote that or demonstrate that or do something? I agree, that intermediate stage is hard, because they sound like, you know, native English speakers, and, you know, they're using all that great slang, and they, you know, sound more like our teenagers than we do. But, you know, that academic language, I know we are doing work in academic language. You want to talk about that a little bit? Because I do think that's such important work.
Yes, and I did want to share that we are using the Rosetta Stone, and we have done a lot of progressive work in our Office of Language Acquisition.
Are we seeing any progress with Rosetta Stone?
And I would offer that if we could have them come and share some of the progress that they have had. They are developing things that offer multiple pathways for testing, in, testing out in languages, for increasing language development in other areas, for developing academic language for English learners that can be shared and used with all learners. So a lot of the work that they've done, when we went to the superintendent's forum on closing the achievement gap, we felt very comfortable, although we did take back to that department the need for an immediate check-in for those who don't do well on the CELT. And so that was something, that monitoring, that we're going to continue to work on.
Thank you.
I think we were impressed with what we saw, our catch-up plans for English language learners, that be more focused in the way a teacher and a student look at those. We have some similar trends, but it's all about being more strategic and more focused in those things that are working for us.
Ron, thanks again for the report. Just, I think the thing that probably stands out the most for me when we look at reports on these, you know, single points of data, the CST scores in particular, I just, it, how, in a sense, dangerous it can be for us to make determinations and therefore decisions, you know, looking at, looking at sort of this as the picture. The, you know, I mean, I think if we go to any school in the district, what we're going to see are, if you take literacy, math, science, social science, and grade levels, you're going to see a pretty nuanced story going on at each school. You might see fourth graders going up in literacy but going down in math. You might see the school as a whole going up in science but going down in social science. And I, and I think that the key to this is, what's going on at the school? You know, are the, are the teachers and the principal and, in some cases, parents and even students, are they coming together and really using data to get a deep and clear picture of what's happening and therefore making decisions, you know, particularly about where to, you know, where to prioritize resources? I worry about, you know, this level of discussion up here, and again, I'm not dismissive of, you know, the need for CSTs, I just think it's such a snapshot and such a baseline. I would imagine, for instance, that if we went through the high schools and, you know, had one chart about, you know, schools' overall test scores versus another chart of, you know, growth in test scores, and compared that to what we just saw with the A to G, you know, access and success rates, I bet we'd see schools moving all over the place, you know, in these, in these comparison charts. So whereas a school might come out, you know, looking right at the top by one measurement, maybe, you know, access and success in A to G courses, that same school might end up, you know, down towards the bottom in, you know, some CST measurement. And do we, and sort of which data point are we looking at then, you know, when it comes time to make decisions over resources? I absolutely agree, you know, with what Mr. DeBeck is saying about the, you know, the difference between, say, fourth graders and 11th graders, but that has implications for us as a board, particularly, you know, during this time, when it comes to how do we allocate scarce resources? Do we say, boy, we're doing something really good at the elementary school level, and let's keep investing resources at the elementary school level, because that's going to pay off, because those kids are going to be better prepared by the time they get into high school? Or do we say, boy, we're really underinvesting in middle school and high school, and therefore let's shift resources there? I don't want to make a decision like that based on these types of, you know, data that are so broad. And, I mean, it's, it just, it feels like, you know, the Cliff Notes version of, you know, of a novel. Cliff Notes version is dangerous, both because it's overly simplistic and in some cases just flat-out wrong, you know, just really missing the story or missing the point. So, and I want to, I don't want to overreact and say, you know, say that, you know, that we don't look at this, but I think, you know, I think this conversation that we have at, you know, at the board level, where we're looking at across the system, I'm just really looking forward to, you know, to the point, you know, where the GSA II task force can come to us with broader and maybe more complete, you know, measures of student achievement that, you know, will allow us to really get a sense of what's going on in the schools and make progress. Just two quick, and I'll turn it over to Mr. DeBeck, two quick points. I do think it's pretty significant that, you know, what Ron, what you just said, that we've got 50 schools out of 200 schools in the district that have gained 30 or more API points. And again, you know, what is gaining, what does gaining 30 or more API points mean? But it means that there's something happening in those schools, and, you know, just as last year, we looked at, I forgot what it was, eight or nine schools, you know, to be able to say that there's 50 schools in the district that have a significant story to tell about progress, I think is pretty exciting. And then just one very, you know, it's, it might seem like a semantic point, but I think it's important in terms of, you know, looking at progress. When we look at the achievement gap, I get a little bit of concern where we, what we're doing is, over time, continuing to measure the gap between the percentage of, say, white kids versus Latino kids and tracking that over time. Let's say that we start at one point in 20 percent of white kids are scoring proficient and 10 percent of Latino kids are scoring proficient. What that means is Latinos kids are succeeding at half the rate of white kids. Now, let's say we take that all the way and we get to a point that white kids are now at 100 percent scoring proficient, and Latino kids are at 90 percent scoring proficient. Well, we could say that the achievement gap hasn't closed, because Latino kids are still 10 points behind white kids, except for the success rate, if we look at the, you know, the ratio has gone from 50 percent to 90 percent. And I think that's something that we might want to, you know, look at and maybe even, you know, sort of prepare in our charts, because to me, it talks about, it talks about progress, and I don't, I don't want us to not see progress if it's in fact, you know, if it's in fact occurring. So I'll leave it at this.
Well, your points are all well-taken, absolutely. The thing that I, I'm back to the same old chart, okay? So let's say there's outliers, there are people that were, this doesn't happen, there's stuff in the district that this doesn't look like it. If I go to a cluster somewhere, or do I go to individual schools, I'm going to find somewhere, I hope I can, through the data that somebody's got, that someplace in this district, this line is a slope like this. Okay? Now, I want to know where that is, and I want to know what they're doing that's different than everybody else. What I don't want to do is just go around here and say, okay, well, let's just make the slope change. What I want to do is find the places where people are already doing it.
And I can agree with that.
And you said, well, maybe about the resources, maybe it's, you know, whether we put money in the elementary or middle. You know, I'm ready to take and experiment with that. I don't mind saying, okay, let's test the hypothesis to see which of the ideas work. But before you do that, you've got to find the places where they're working against the tide. They know there's something happening in the, in the sixth grade in some school, in the Point Loma cluster or in the Lincoln cluster, that's different, and we want to know what that is and what's going on. That's the missing ingredient in this school district. We keep doing stuff, and we say, well, there's a better way, better way, let's all work on it, but nobody knows who's doing the better stuff. They can't, you know, you even look at the scores of a school, they went from 650 to 750, well, that's good, but somewhere in there was a teacher and a class and a curriculum that got them...
Yeah, unlocked it.
Far better than that, and nobody knows who it is. They don't even know what the techniques are that that person's using to got them there. See, the school didn't move by itself, it moved because some individuals within the school did some special stuff. We want to know where that is and find it. That's not part of the system we're working on. We don't, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to blame teachers, but I want to say attaboy. But I also want to know whether they're doing stuff that we're telling them, ignoring what we're telling them, and actually doing better. That's a pretty good idea.
I think we've started on that road. We have professional learning communities at our schools where they sit down perhaps at grade levels, and they have discussions amongst the teachers. You know, you had this many students who were proficient on this area, I had maybe stronger performance than another, what are you doing in those areas? So we're beginning that transition into looking at data more carefully to answer those types of questions.
We may want to accelerate that, that's what I'm saying.
Great. Just, we want to hear from Nancy and Justine, and then we've got...
Take time for our local support team.
Okay. Well, this is a little bit off-topic from what you were just saying, but I think that a lot of the students, at least at our schools, they don't realize the importance of the CST test because they don't individually affect them, so they're not held accountable really. So I think that the teachers and administrators need to emphasize more the importance as, like, the scores are for the whole school. And, for example, like, our school has, they have incentives for, if you do score proficient or advanced on the test, we get the extended lunch, an hour-long lunch, as opposed to, like, only having 30 minutes of lunch and having an advisory. And the kids that have advisory go to CST prep classes and CASI prep classes, where they can, like, learn better test-taking skills to improve their scores. So...
Just to go off of what Justine was saying, we have a similar problem at our school that the majority of the students kind of take the few days we test and just relax and finish the test, don't really pay attention to what they're actually doing, and they don't realize the greater effect it has on the school's community. So, like, at Point Loma, excuse me, we started kind of providing incentives through the ASB for students who score proficient or higher in all the categories to receive them. And it, we started this last year, and the teachers and administration really got into it as well, and our API score increased 18 points from the year before. So I think within the individual schools, if something like that is done and provided to encourage the students to do better, that it really does have an effect.
That's great. Yeah, no, really appreciate it. And they describe these tests as high-stakes tests. Well, it's high-stakes tests for adults, but is it high-stakes tests for students? And it's great. Thank you, Ron. Thank you very much. Thank you, Nellie. Like to, we've got Assembly Member Block here, and I appreciate, I know that you've come in from Sacramento, and you've got a lot to do yet tonight, but I know you've got some important news for us, so I wanted to welcome you here.
Yeah, we call it a budget.
Thank you, President Barrera, Superintendent Calba, Board. Great to be here with good news, news that you've already heard, but just to reiterate, I just got off a plane at 6:40, so I'm glad you're still meeting. We have three, three good items, the most important for the district and the best news, really. AB 184, the bill that Catherine Nakamura and Monica from your staff brought to me earlier this year to make sure that special ed funding that had been overlooked in the last budget, that hadn't been properly allocated, would in fact come to the district. And it will mean $9 million a year for two years to San Diego, that's $18 million. And let me say that it was a team effort. Bernie Reinerson, Monica, others from the district, folks on my staff, Margaret Peña is here, my legislative director, my chief of staff, Chris Ward is here, really worked together to make this happen. And it was a bipartisan bill. My Republican friends, Democrats, all worked together, and the governor a couple days ago did sign...
the governor a couple of days ago did sign it. What this means is it's $18 million for San Diego Unified, about $18 million or $17 million more for other districts in San Diego County, and many millions more around the state. So that's the first bit of good news. Second bit of good news, some of you have heard, you're aware of what San Diego State did last year, they made a, a decision not to admit all CSU-eligible local students. I think it was a horrible decision, it was made behind closed doors. I, I worked for San Diego State for 26 years, loved the university, go to all the basketball games, might start going to football games again now. It's, it's just a marvelous educational institution, but they've closed their doors on local students. And these are students of yours who, for four years in high school, were told, if you follow these rules, you will get into San Diego State. And your guidance counselors were told, and your teachers were told, if you tell your students this, they will get into San Diego State. And last year, with just two weeks left before the application period opened, a few administrators at San Diego State, behind closed doors, made a decision to change admission requirements. Now, you may agree or disagree with the decision, I personally disagree. But what you, what's hard to disagree with is that the decision was made poorly, the process was poor. They didn't contact you, they didn't contact community college boards, they didn't contact Sweetwater School District, they didn't talk to parent groups or community groups, they talked to no one. It is San Diego's state university, they should make decisions like this that affect local students in public. Well, I ran a bill that would require that San Diego State or any CSU campus, if they make a decision that's going to negatively impact local students, they need to have three public meetings, like this board meeting, they need to be noticed and called, they need to put the minutes of the meetings on their website, and they need to invite, in particular, local governing board members of high school and Unified districts and community college districts. After they have three meetings where they involve these people, they then make whatever decision they want to make. I personally think, had they done it this year, they would have made a very different decision. But they can make whatever decision they want to make. One important caveat, though, is that when they make the decision, now they made it two weeks before the application period started. My bill says, when they make a decision that negatively impacts local students, they need to wait, in most cases, at least a year before they affect the decision, which means that students and their parents can redirect their efforts in terms of where they want to attend, if they need to take additional tests or courses, they can go somewhere else. The third bit of good news, that, that's Bill 2402, the governor signed the last couple of days. The third bit of good news isn't a bill, but it relates to the 1,740 local students who were affected by San Diego State's decision. And that is, in a conversation with Charlie Reed about 11 o'clock yesterday morning, the chancellor of the CSU system told me that all of the students who had been admitted will get in, if they haven't already gone somewhere else, they will be admitted to San Diego State. So we, we have some extra money that's gone to them, some federal stimulus funding, and frankly, Chancellor Reed has never been a supporter of this decision by this campus, and he is doing the right thing in making sure that all of your students, who were supposed to automatically get into San Diego State, will now get in. So, so three bits of good news, thank you for everything you all do, thanks so much.
Thank you.
And Marty, before you head out, we just wanted to present you with a certificate of appreciation from our district for, obviously, the work that you did to pass, to sponsor and then pass AB 184. But for all the work that you've been doing with us over the past couple of years in your first term in the legislature, it's pretty extraordinary, the kind of success that you've had, whether it's fighting for lower class sizes for our students, fighting to make sure our kids have access to San Diego State and other universities. You've really become a go-to person for public education across the state, but certainly our go-to person in, in San Diego. And you've been able to work across partisan lines, which we know how difficult that is to do right now in Sacramento. So, I won't read the whole thing, but on, on behalf of the superintendent and the entire Board of Education, we'd like to present you with this.
Thank you.
He likes attaboy, so I don't know why.
Okay, well, that was, that was terrific news. So, let's move on now to item F1, this is, can we get a motion to approve the minutes from Friday recording?
Second.
Okay, Mr. DeBeck.
All right.
Great, and we'll move on now to information reports from the board, Mr. DeBeck?
Done.
Okay. Ms. Nakamura?
Yeah, just following on the heels of that with the AB 184, the, the governor really left us hanging there, and, you know, we thought he was going to sign it, then we thought he'd let it pass into law, and then he was threatening to veto it. And I want to thank Superintendent Koba for the work he did this weekend, you know, the governor just signed it yesterday, late, and, but, you know, the memorandum that you sent up. But I also have to give a shout-out to, you know, I contacted some veterans associations, I contacted, early on, we worked with the California School Boards Association, the local ones, and Monica Inestroza, our government relations officer, you know, gave me the numbers to talk with them about what it meant for them. I contacted them again in September, early September, and then yesterday, and they were calling and sending. So, when we talk about CSBA and, and, and its value for, you know, for this school district, that was, I think, really instrumental in getting all hands on deck on this, and, because we all would have been, you know, to keep up with the metaphor in the same boat without it. So, at any rate, but, you know, Assemblymember Block was just to carry that through and to get unanimous vote of both houses was, that's yeoman's work, he just really did. Great, why do we use all these Navy metaphors with you?
Somehow it's creeping in.
You know, Mr. Koba. I wanted to say that, a couple of things, one, people need to go on Voice of San Diego and the article on Mann Middle School, there is a fabulous, fabulous article on there about their, their progress and that what they have done to succeed, and it's a really good success story, there's room for more growth. But, you know, there's 23 responses on Voice of San Diego regarding the budget crisis, and there are, you know, there are only a couple on Mann Middle School. And Mann Middle School is watching, so why don't we use that as a, you know, like they do on Facebook, you know, a wall where we can leave messages and say, you know, go for it, and, you know, congratulations. I think, you know, that could be like a little yearbook for us. But the, it stopped off at Lewis and Clay, was invited to both those schools, which also made great progress. You know, that was, they had a red carpet treatment at Clay, very, really fun, they were so excited, having made the largest increase in the district, and then went to Lewis. I actually brought them flowers for making it out of program improvement, which is really difficult to do, and they did extremely well. Want to give a call out, a shout-out also to Target. This Friday at Miller Elementary School, they're going to unveil their new library, and I love libraries, and they're going to, I can't wait, it was really hard, I really wanted to do the remodel myself, I knew exactly what I could do there, you know, how I could change things, but they had, you know, I, first of all, I didn't have the time to stay and do it, and they had a great team, I can't wait to see what they've done. But Target's generosity in this for Miller, for Miller Elementary School needs to be acknowledged and thanked. And finally, we have the PE credit for cheer, a drill team and color guard is, is moving along, and I think we'll be having some progress to report on that shortly, you know, I'm, I'm hoping, you know, sometime in October, I'd like to get that wrapped up and put to bed, so, and get it taken care of. But that's all mine, I have been busy, our schools, you can't keep up with them, it's like, you know, they're on rocket fuel or something, so keep it up, it's great.
Okay, just real quick, I want to say, in terms of appreciation of Marty Block for what he did, but also to the community on this issue of the San Diego State students, because the community really did rise up about this. And there was one person in the community, Pat Washington, who spent hours organizing people, getting people, speaking up, and doing whatever she could to bring it to the forefront, and you can see what, what the result is, that work that she did for that, so that's really great participation in the community. I just wanted to mention, I had told the 2nd graders at Bay Park Elementary that I would be mentioning them, I'm sure they're all watching on TV right now, I'm sure after two and a half hours, they did not change channels.
They get taped, it's taped.
Mrs. Landenstone's class, it's, it's a great school, the teachers are working together, it's a great group of students, they were on their 11th day of school, they were all doing, writing great stories about different things that they had done. It's just really exciting to go into our schools and see what's happening. The teacher is someone who's taught for over 30 years and, and had just as much enthusiasm and interest in the students as I'm sure she had the first day that she was teaching, they talked about the involvement of the parents, they have a community garden, parents from each class come in and help, they're eating broccoli all day in the classroom, they're doing, they're just doing really great things at the schools, and I think we just need to kind of get this, this word out a lot more, there's a lot of collaboration of parents and teachers and community. I was also out at Wagenheim Middle School today and saw they have a great metal and wood shop, which is, is not very common nowadays in our school, and the kids, the teacher just had amazing control of the group, they were doing all kinds of great projects
Which school?
At Wagenheim.
Wagenheim.
And then I was at Mason Elementary, and also just very impressed with the 5th grade teachers in terms of the collaboration they're doing in their math program, having, working together, sitting down and figuring out how to help the students and getting the teachers who are in stronger in one area to help out in that area. So, this is all indicative of what we're doing in the district, and I think we just need to give everybody a pat on the back for the good work they're doing.
Great, I just want to thank everybody who came out to our first town hall forum last week at San Diego High. We had, I think, about 120, it was parents, students, teachers, principals, community leaders, you know, who came together, and it's really two questions that we're focusing on at our town hall. One is, we, we talk about how do we make sure that we continue to make progress and, and give all of our kids an opportunity and a great education. Seems like the question we should constantly be asking ourselves, and particularly in light of the progress that we're seeing across the, across the district and at particular schools. However, the second question is, given the budget crisis that we're in, how do we come together as a community and make sure that we don't see all that progress go right off the cliff? And that's what we're worried about, and that's what we need to keep confronting as a community. At the state level, we need, need to get behind people like Marty Block in the state legislature and push hard to make sure that a budget is signed that protects public education. And at the community level, we need to come together, and I'll just, you know, make a pitch for Proposition J. And, and we've got upcoming, I think, eight more town halls tomorrow night at Scripps Ranch High.
That's right.
So I'd encourage people to, to get, get out and participate in those.
Crawford on Thursday.
And Crawford on Thursday, great, thanks. Okay, we will move on, can we get a, for item H1 and H2?
I'm to approve both H1 and H2.
Second.
Please vote. And consent agenda.
Prove.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any public comments?
Okay, please vote. Okay, great, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right.